I want to welcome counsel. Welcome whoever is listening. We're going to be virtual the next couple of meetings and hopefully, hopefully this virus will calm down here in the next four to six weeks and we'll be all back together in the regular meetings. So for right now, we're going to go virtual and try to be safe and do the best thing for everybody. So right now, could we stand? And Mr. Lester is going to say the prayer and then we're going to do the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Will you join me in prayer? Almighty and everlasting God, we give you thanks for the life and work of Desmond Tutu in lifting up democracy and respect for the humanity of each individual. Echoing the words of Archbishop Tutu, we pray for our leaders, custodians of our mother earth and of this democracy. May they negotiate with wisdom and fairness and lead us in the path of justice for the sake of our children and our children's children. We pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. I have a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Lester. I appreciate you. Great prayer. Appreciate that. So. Okay, counsel, we have the agenda before us. And are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to amend the agenda to include a closed session afterward. And do we need to list the reasons at this time? And if so, could staff assist us with that? Get the proper citations in here?
Sure.
Personnel and legal matters.
So I will move for that addition to the agenda.
Second.
Second, if you need it.
On this, Madam Secretary? Yeah, take yourself off mute.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio? Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Mr. Pack?
Say hello.
Here, did you hear us, Cory? Just a thumbs up if you can hear us. We can't hear you. Thumbs up if you can hear us. Uh-oh. Now. Yep, he can't hear us. Can you hear me? No. Yeah, now I can hear you.
I can hear you. Go ahead.
You can hear us? Okay, so we want to keep moving forward. Okay, so let's just keep moving forward. I think Cory will be with us in a few minutes.
That's right.
Hey Clay, do we want to, you think Clay, do we want to? Do we want to move on or?
Why don't we give it just a couple of minutes here?
Okay, no problem.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, no worries. No worries. We'll just tell everybody, we'll just try to get Mr. Pack here hooked up and get this agenda all straight. We just need his approval too. Well, we'll get there.
Thank you.
Mr. Callahan, Mr. Pack is going to call in as well and see if he can get audio that way.
Okay, all right, no problem. You want me just hold it up until we can hear him? You're thinking?
Yes, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Hey, good. Okay, we're just, we're just, if people are out there listening to us, we're just gonna, we're trying to get Mr. Pack online here. So if you could just be a little patient, we'll have him on here in a few minutes. Appreciate it. This is kind of messing my record-setting meeting up, you know what I mean? So Pete, I think it's not going to happen. I think Cory staged this somehow, you know?
Feel the hand that we are dealt.
Exactly. Yep.
Or rather, we play the hand that we are dealt.
That's right. I know what you meant, you know?
Mr. Callahan, if you want to just go ahead and get started, we'll still work with Mr. Pack on his audio issue.
Okay, so we'll move on with, we had a, Madam Secretary, you want to, once again, do we want to say with the agenda, we changed the agenda a little bit? You want to tell them?
Lester made a motion and Ms. Price seconded the motion to go into closed session following the meeting for legal and personnel matters.
Okay, that sounds great. So that got passed. So, okay, so we're going to, we're going to move on to minutes now?
Well, we're still waiting. We were waiting for Mr. Pack's vote.
Okay, so can we, can we, can we move on and get that vote here when he comes on the board? Does that be okay?
I mean, we already have four votes, so we should be able to move on.
That's what I was thinking, but I just didn't want to break protocol if Madam Secretary didn't want me to, you know?
You're the boss.
Okay, all right. Well, it's screwed up. It's my fault, okay? All right, let's move on to minutes. Okay, so December 14th, December 21st. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections on the minutes? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted by unanimous consent. Let's move on to the next, which would be dispersments of December 28th, January 4th, and January 11th. Counsel has had time to review it. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections on the dispersments? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted by unanimous consent. And what I didn't do on the agenda, I want to go back up to the agenda. We are waiting for Mr. Pack's vote, but I probably should say, hearing nothing, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so now we are going to move on. And Jess, just, you know, stop me, or Madam Secretary, stop me, you know, if you need to butt in, okay? We're going to do an update with the Talbot County Health Department on the COVID. Dr. McGuire, I believe, is on the line. And so we're going to welcome Dr., there she is. Can you hear me, Dr. McGuire?
Are you?
Okay, well, we want to welcome you. How are you doing, night?
I'm doing just fine. How are you?
I'm doing great. So we're going, we're going to, we're excited to hear good news that it's going downhill now, right? I hope. So, but anyway, let's, let's hear an update and if you can, and for everybody, so we can hear, you know, what's going on out there.
All right. Well, thank you, President Callahan and the council members for inviting me yet again to provide an update on the current pandemic due to the coronavirus situation in Talbot County, as well as the health department's response to the COVID pandemic. As President Callahan mentioned, it's I only give good news. So, just kidding, but you know.
I know, I know you do.
As was mentioned, there's a hand we're dealt, so we will respond accordingly.
Please keep it simple. Please keep it simple.
All right, so just, we can move on to the next slide, hopefully. I don't know. Yeah, okay, thank you. So I just wanted to give just a situational update. Just over a month ago, the Maryland Department of Health experienced a network outage. A lot of people probably heard about this, and I just wanted to give just a small update about how this is continuing to affect us, as well as all the other local health departments. So on December 4th, there was an event that caused certain systems within the entire Maryland Department of Health to be suspended. Some access to these systems did return, including some data systems related to COVID, returned somewhere between December 20th and December 30th. But I just wanted to mention that some data and systems are still inaccessible to the Maryland Department of Health and therefore to us as the local health department. And this includes our detailed county-level COVID hospitalization numbers, detailed death data, and some other things. And just in terms of our day-to-day operations, just to give you just a very brief picture of what this means to us, we are still not allowed to use our normal work computers. I'm on my personal computer right now. Our printers, our scanners, and other devices. So we're relying on, like I said, personal computers. Staff is sharing computers. We're using loaners. We're buying new computers that were not in our budget. And we are, again, still without access to our internal network, our internal servers. They're undergoing a forensic evaluation right now to see the extent of this infection, so to speak. And therefore, right now, we don't have access to most of our regular files or any software that's not based on the web. So that is hindering our day-to-day efforts. We're trying to, you know, cope as best we can. And I do hope that within the next, I'm crossing my fingers for a week or two, that we will be back on board with some of our normal operations. We are continuing to provide as many normal services as we can. And luckily, we do have access to Wi-Fi, which a lot of our neighboring health departments do not and are operating off of hotspots. So just as a background to what I present, some of the data I have may not be quite as detailed as usual, and that's partly the reason for that. But we are coping as best we can. So next slide, please. Okay, just to give a sense of where we are, I'm sure anyone who's been paying attention has noticed that cases of COVID are surging right now since the beginning of December. I just wanted to show an overall graph of where we in Talbot have been since about 16 months and which variant we were dealing with at the time, just to give perspective. So back in the spring, it was that Alpha variant from the United Kingdom that people were worried about. And then we transitioned over to Delta, which was, there was a concern for its severity, its impact on hospitalizations and deaths. And then now, boom, Omicron. So Omicron has really been surging. We, right now, just to give some very high-level info, we have, in our worst time, before we even started our vaccination campaign, we have two and a half times as many cases on basically a daily basis right now, this January, as we did a year ago, January. And it's really because of this sudden and swift Omicron spread. And we have literally a five-time increase in the number of cases from early December to today. So just in that one month, we've had, you know, five times the case rate. Can you go, oh, sorry, thank you. And so in the past week, we've had over 500 cases, and that's, like I said, five times what we normally had in a week back around Thanksgiving, early December. And we're currently dealing with several outbreaks in different locations, some nursing home outbreaks, there's outbreaks in schools. We always have outbreaks throughout this pandemic, but now we're certainly seeing them more widespread and definitely affecting a lot of our core and essential agencies. And, you know, ever since vaccination started, the goal has really been to keep all our normal business operations running normally, keep kids in school. And what we're finding is a lot of our organizations and agencies are really struggling with staffing right now because of this. Next slide, please. We are noticing a significant increase in our test positivity in Talbot County. So we traditionally have been running around a 5% to 10% of our tests that are done by residents coming back positive. And that was, you know, pretty acceptable. It goes high and low here and there. But this 28% is really unheard of and the highest we've ever been in Talbot County. It's a three and a half times increase in the past month. We've been trending similar to the rest of the state. Right now, today, the state reached just over 30% of tests coming back positive. In the healthcare settings, so doctors' offices, the hospital, they're running higher, which kind of makes sense because people who go to doctors' offices or hospitals are probably already, you know, sick. And they're in the kind of 40 to 50% range in terms of tests. So this is something we haven't seen before. Yes?
I ask one question. So, you know, just a quick little thing. So help everybody understand what the 28% means to what other number. So 28%, you know, so what are we, what are we trying to? What am I trying to say? 28% to what other number? What was the number?
So what was the number was, the goal that had been talked about for the longest time was, we really want to keep a number of under 5%. That's probably good. And what's interesting is at the way beginning of the pandemic, when we were talking about, well, what metrics do we use to keep, you know, for schools to go virtual? And really, it was this metric of, you know, 5% positivity. And, you know, those metrics are obviously out the window at this point because now we know more. It's a different, it's a different situation than it was March 2020.
Right, right.
We have, in general, in this county, maintained a decent, at most times, test positivity, which meant that we had, except for certain times when tests were short, we had enough testing going on of people who were not sick. But now what we see is that literally for every 100 tests performed on Talbot residents, 28 of those are coming back positive. And generally, if a place, a country, has a rate of 25% or above, that's telling me, ooh, there's a lot of COVID going on. There's not enough testing going on. And that's an issue that needs to be fixed. And so we're kind of chasing our tails with testing.
Okay, okay, appreciate that.
Sure thing. Next slide, please. So this is all due to the Omicron variant that came, or was first identified, I should say, out of South Africa. And the reason for this, we've talked about other variants of coronavirus becoming, you know, behaving differently, let's say. Some are more severe, some are more infectious, contagious. And so I just wanted to put out a perspective of what this Omicron means. And of course, we're learning more about it as more people get infected. But if I had to give a headline, it would be really infectious, really contagious, probably less severe than the Delta we just came off of. And so the epidemiologists use this number called the R0, or the reproducibility index. And this is basically the average number of people that you, as a sick infected person, will go on to infect. And so when you talk about your normal flu, that number's about 1.2. When you talk about the pandemic flu from 1918, it was higher than that. It was 1.8. When we had our COVID 1.0, the original, that number was about 2.5. So for every one person who was sick with COVID, they went on to infect, on average, two and a half other people. And that's how it spreads, you know, and it's like compound interest, you know? And then with Delta, that increased even further to five. With Omicron, we don't really know right now. I keep asking our epidemiologists, okay, what is that number? It's certainly above seven. Some have told me 10. And that means that really, when you're, when you're out and about, sick with COVID, you're likely to infect a lot of other people, all things being equal. I want to compare this to measles. Measles is the most contagious disease in the world, and it's, our not number is somewhere between 12 and 18. A lot of people cite it at 15 to 17. And so it's not necessarily that right now, but it is very contagious. And so, so what does this mean? Would we care? Okay, so next slide, please. Thank you. So it's really contagious, but isn't it mild? And this does seem to be true, and I'll show this on some of the next slides, but for most people, Omicron is pretty mild. A lot of people are describing this as a cold. Anecdotally, a lot of people we are seeing are, you know, out of work, kind of with like flu-like symptoms. So it doesn't certainly make them feel good. But it's not for everyone. And the thing is, when you, even with a milder variant, if it's that much more transmissible and it spreads so aggressively, it does ultimately cause more hospitalization and even deaths. And so I put this scale just to show, yeah, it's less severe for most, but that's far, far outweighed by just how rapidly this is spreading in the community. And so, so right now, you know, a lot of people are changing how they're describing this and saying that the key thing to look at is how many people are being hospitalized, not necessarily how many people are sick or coming back positive, but how many people are truly being affected and how are we burdening the health system? Next slide, please. And so when we look at the hospitalizations in Maryland, we are seeing, you know, this exponential increase. And the number of people hospitalized today with COVID is 3,452. And that has far exceeded what we saw with Delta. The peak for the Delta variant was, you know, a quarter of this. And they are expecting in the next week or two for this to climb even further, approaching maybe 5,000 hospitalizations a day. Please, yes.
Just real quick, you did say with COVID, not necessarily of COVID, correct?
Yeah, and that's an important point because I'm trying to figure this out, but the reason someone is hospitalized comes into effect here. So is it someone who is admitted to the hospital because they're sick with COVID? Or is it someone admitted for another reason, like a heart attack, and they incidentally happen to have COVID? And these numbers include all those, so both categories. When I asked the hospitals for exact numbers on those, the closest I can find, and it's, I don't know how reliable this is, but it came out of Johns Hopkins, is that they think about 70% of people are admitted with COVID because they're sick with COVID, and maybe 30% they find it. But I don't know if it's, oh, I came in for gallbladder surgery and, oh, now I'm coughing and now I'm on oxygen, you know, if it's that type of sequence either. So, yeah, it's about maybe 30% of people are the with, not because of. So that should be taken into account. But.
Two other really quick things. Even Dr. Fauci was talking about, like, the children. And he said, you know, that that is grossly overstated, that, you know, a kid who's been there with a broken leg, you know, happens to test positive. So they're not there at all because of COVID. And I believe it was a CDC director, I can't remember her name, I'm sure you know her name, that the people that are hospitalized have four to six comorbidities, so that they're obviously major underlying health conditions. So trying, you know, to follow all of the information that's coming out, including from, you know, Dr. Fauci and the CDC, you know, director. So it keeps it in some perspective. So anyway, continue.
Yeah, and for Maryland, you know, luckily for the children, we've never had huge, you know, huge numbers. But I did notice that they are following the same trend and having increases. So they just started reporting out the number of kids hospitalized with positive COVID. And it was in the single or low double digits in the fall. And just on Friday, they reached 60. And so it's certainly increasing a lot. And so, yes, not all of them are necess, you know, yeah, maybe they have a broken leg and they're there for orthopedic surgery or something and they test positive. But the reports from Children's National and Johns Hopkins Children's Hospital and UMS Children's Hospital definitely say that their ICUs, especially in conjunction with some other normal winter issues, are being filled because it's this COVID hospitalization is really putting stress on their, on their systems. Fortunately, if there is some good news, it's that we're having less ICU admissions proportionally. So, you know, we are not seeing the, you know, four times as many ICU. Of course, ICU is, you know, limited resource-wise, but it is approaching the highest levels that we've seen so far. And I just had a call with Shore Regional, you know, their ICU is full. A lot of hospitals, their ICUs are full. Yes, not just with COVID patients, but they are, you know, taking up the beds. And I don't often mention, you know, costs, but I've read that the average COVID hospitalization, for COVID itself, not for an incidental, does cost somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000. And so, so that does add up. These 3,400 people, if they are admitted for COVID, that's $69 million. These 3,400 people, if they are admitted for COVID, that's $69 million just them. So so the so the hospitalization is really what's being stressed right now. Next slide, please. And so the hospitals have have said on on calls, on communication, that they are overwhelmed. They are implementing things called crisis standards of care. I know Title Health down in Salisbury went into that today. This is something Shore is is involved in right now. And and this, these are specific interventions to deal with the overwhelming burden that they have, coupled with staff shortages, because their own staff is affected too, and some are out and sick. And one of the things they're doing is canceling non-emergency procedures. I hate to call these elective because, you know, they're medically necessary procedures. I guess they could wait a bit, but that means people are getting delayed, you know, cancer diagnoses. And they are also implementing crisis staffing levels. And this is after, you know, almost two years of of this workforce already working higher than normal with with, you know, COVID hospitalizations. And this is also causing backlash on the emergency services. We have reports of ambulances sitting at hospitals for a couple hours, they have to divert, which takes those ambulances out of our community. And as I mentioned, you know, their own staff is is stretched and taxed because of their own staff getting sick. And I just put a picture of, this was an ad from hospitals from Ohio, where hospitals like the Cleveland Clinic literally put out an ad saying, help, because this was in mid-December, saying, you know, please, please, get vaccinated so that we can stop being overwhelmed, which I think sends a big message. Next slide, please. In in terms of deaths due to this Omicron surge, again, like the ICU situation, proportionally, they're not as high, but they are approaching the highest levels. When we look specifically at Talbot, which is on the next slide, we have cumulatively, since the beginning of this pandemic, this graph doesn't show it exactly, but we've had 68 deaths due to COVID. And the thing I wanted to show in this graph, which shows the number of deaths over time, is that luckily, right now, we are not seeing the exponential increase in deaths, which we saw a year ago, November, when the slope of this curve became very, very vertical. But of course, you know, we want to avoid all deaths if we can, especially if any are preventable. Next slide, please. So who is hospitalized? What is accounting for these increased, you know, COVID hospitalizations? And what we're seeing across Maryland is that over 75% of these hospitalizations are in people who have received no no COVID vaccinations. And the Eastern Shore hospitals, they are reporting somewhere between 80 and 85% of of their admissions with COVID are in people who are completely unvaccinated. About 20% of people are vaccinated, but they're due for their booster, and so they're not technically up to date, as in, you know, maybe they were vaccinated last February, and and now they're sick with Omicron. And in Maryland, less than 5% of people admitted to the hospital with COVID are fully vaccinated and and boosted. So so there's still this immune escape with Omicron, which is concerning. The, like I said, on the Eastern Shore hospitals, numbers are are pretty similar, a little bit skewing more towards the unvaccinated. Next slide, please.
Dr. McGuire.
Please.
That statistic seems particularly surprising, that we would have an even higher proportion of hospitalized who are unvaccinated, given our relatively high vaccination rates in Talbot County, or perhaps that's offset by lower vaccination rates in surrounding counties that are being served by these hospitals.
That's exactly it. So these, that those statistics, those percentages, were from the hospital data themselves. It's not specifically for Talbot residents. The the COVID hospitalizations for Talbot residents, per se, I am not receiving at this time. That's one of those systems that unfortunately is still not able to be disseminated. And part of the reason that's significant for us is because previously, and I assume it's continuing, about 60% of Talbot residents who were hospitalized for COVID were going across the bridge to the Special Laurel COVID Hospital. And so that meant they weren't local, they they weren't here at Shore or down in Salisbury or or even Anarundel. But, you know, right now, I'm just, I just gave the statistics about the hospitals here, and they certainly serve a wide variety of people from various counties. And you're correct in that Talbot itself does have a higher vaccination rate than our surrounding counties. But I can't, I can't pull out exactly how many of our hospitals' patients are residents of Talbot.
Dr. McGuire, this is Corey, I have a question for you. So so what what seems to be propelling this movement, where you have 75% of people nationally who are going to the hospital are unvaccinated, 85% here in the region that are admitted into hospitals are unvaccinated? And you have hospital staff, doctors, emergency nursing staff, who are saying, we're overwhelmed, we're, you know, the the flood of people coming in is overwhelming us, you know, we're telling people, do not go to the hospital to get your COVID shot, you know, you should be going to either the health department or into one of the local pharmacies to do What's the difficulty in getting that messaging out to people, that the unvaccinated are the bulk of this problem?
Right, well, the that that's a million-dollar question there. So so why why aren't more people vaccinated? Because a lot of these hospitalizations could be prevented, not all of them, certainly, but a lot of them could be. And some people may assume, oh, a year ago, I was infected with COVID, I'm fine, or a lot of it seems to be a sense of, I'm I'm not high risk, I'm in the 20 to 50-year-old age group, I don't have underlying health conditions. You know, the the bulk of hospitalizations are not in the 65-year-old and older population that was meant to, you know, what, two years ago, we kept harping on, oh, the seniors and who's high risk? And what we're seeing now is the bulk of our infections, especially in, you know, in Talbot County, I know, are are in the unvaccinated, you know, 20 to 50-year-old population, where it it may not be someone who considers them high risk. Certainly, some people hospitalized are potentially immunosuppressed or at higher risk. The other thing is, COVID, coronavirus seems to be especially problematic in in people who are obese or overweight, and about 70% of US adults are overweight. So, you know, a lot of people who fit in those categories may not think of themselves as particularly high-risk or immunosuppressed, but it it does tend to have a more severe course in in those individuals. So it it's a really tough message. And and then, of course, I'll show later on, a lot of people may have a false sense of security because, like I said, either they they had COVID themselves, or because they were vaccinated a while back. Now, the vaccinated are are not the bulk, but we're certainly seeing a lot of people who seem to have, their immunity has waned, and and they haven't gotten their booster dose yet, for whatever for whatever reason. There's a lot of fears, too, about what are what are the long-term side effects of of these vaccines? So far, all the data I've seen shows that they are safe and effective. There are very, very few side effects, very few significant adverse events. There's been hundreds of millions of doses of these given out. And I I can report on, you know, less, on one hand, less than one full hand, the amount of adverse events we've seen.
I think what you do is that it's almost like competing thoughts. I mean, if if you're looking at what's the long-term side effect as opposed to what's the short, what's the short-term risk of not getting vaccinated and and spreading it to your loved ones and your family? I mean, that that's a very dangerous game of roulette that individuals are playing, to say, hey, I'm concerned about the long-term risk that may be out there if I do get vaccinated, as opposed to the short-term risk of being unvaccinated, contracting the disease, ending up in the ICU, and and and, God forbid, even even worse, and then spreading that to to family members. So I think that's a very dangerous game of roulette, when people are are using that as their measuring stick, to say that the long-term risk, the unknown, the unknown long-term risk, is why they're not choosing to be vaccinated. But but just wanted to to get your point on that. And 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 I'm hearing a lot that that, you know, COVID is going to be with us for the near foreseeable future, I mean, like like the flu. Do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've been in a pandemic stage, and we will be entering an endemic stage at some point, which means the virus circulates, it may be seasonally, like as does flu, as does other viruses, as do other viruses. And we're not at that point, but but we will see, you know, coronaviruses, viruses mutate, that's what they do, that's how they survive. Fortunately, some, like, for instance, some influenza's are not as as severe as, say, like what happened in 1918, where we had millions of deaths. And and that's the hope with with this coronavirus, is that it will, in future mutations, you know, be less severe and and truly have, you know, the effect of being a cold, which for for most coronaviruses, that is what they are. When I used to see kids come up positive for coronavirus in clinics, oh, it's a cold, I don't have to worry about that. But, you know, until soon.
We're kind of seeing that now, when you look at Omicron versus Delta. I mean, Omicron, of course, is spreading more rapidly, but the death rates and hospital hospitalization rates, from what I can, what I've seen, are less with the Omicron than they have been with the with the Delta virus, so Delta strain, I should say.
That's true. It's it's Omicron is still much more severe than the, quote, "normal" coronaviruses, though, you know, that literally are are colds. And so, you know, we will have to deal with, you know, COVID as as a disease, you know, I don't I don't know how how long, but yeah, for the foreseeable future.
No one knows.
And and my take on it is, well, we need to, as a community and as individuals, do what we can to make it not disrupt society and make it not, you know, cause deaths and keep out people out of the hospitals. I think back to, you know, March 2020, when we were talking about, you know, crushing the curve and making sure hospitals can function, and and I'm hearing echoes of that, although we we are in a different place right now. But, yeah, it's, honestly, I do think a lot of people will become infected, and what they can do to make it less severe on themselves and less, you know, cause the system to be less burdened, is to do what they can, which is, and I say it at the end, too, you know, most of it is, let's get vaccinated, let's get some immunity under our belts. Because a lot of people are getting COVID who who were vaccinated, some even who were boosted. And what I see is, if you were vaccinated, got your booster, you're you may be sick, but you're sick at home, you're not sick intubated, you're not sick in the hospital.
What about the take-home test kits? Are we are we getting more of those coming in?
Well, we are continuing to get a small allotment. We, as a health department, just, I go into this a little bit later, we just made a large purchase, but, you know, these are expensive. So we purchased 1,200 rapid antigen tests, and we purchased 1,000 more PCR tests for at-home use. And that is actually the end of our testing budget for for buying tests. We keep being told, in very general sense, yeah, more will be coming, I've yet to see it. I I did hear some good news today, that we're getting an additional testing site in Easton. The governor did mention, as part of the, you know, due to the announcement that that he enacted, you know, a public health emergency, he was able to mobilize some National Guard, and they are going throughout the state in 20, what they call, hospital-adjacent testing sites. And so we will have one in Easton, probably not for another week or week and a half. And that that will help. But the at-home tests are still limited. I was, we get a bi-weekly allotment, and up until today, it was 252 kits every two weeks, that's not nearly enough of what we need. And today, I was told we were getting 126. I was able to increase that back up to 252. But honestly, a lot of those kits are not going to the general population right now because we're trying to ensure, you know, adequate staffing levels in our community of emergency and public safety agencies. So a lot of our kits that we're getting in for rapid testing are going to places like the detention center and, you know, fire and police, to make sure that those people can go to work.
Well, that's a good point. With that being said, I mean, I've I've talked to friends in other counties, and they're going into their local CVS or Walgreens and getting three or four kits and bringing them home. So how how does the local residents here in Talbot County, who are maybe vaccinated and boosted, but want to have a kit in case they they may become in contact, how do they get it? If if your kits are just being saved within for governmental use, then how how does the general public get kits here in Talbot County?
We do have a couple pharmacies that are getting them in stock. I know Pemberton Pharmacy tends to get some in stock, and I know the minute I say that, they'll disappear. But but what we're hearing from residents is, when they go to pharmacies, it's, they're they're very briefly in sellout. So there there is not enough coming in. And we we have placed requests to receive more from the state, we've yet to hear back on those requests. We we, you know, we've tried to buy some ourselves, and there's just not enough supply right now. And and I keep hearing there's, you know, millions of purchases and so many hundreds of thousands that have been purchased, they're not coming here. And it's very frustrating.
Yes, it is.
Dr. McGuire, can you, can you, I appreciate it, could you? We've got some more things, so could you go ahead and kind of wrap it up for us, if you could?
Sure thing, sure thing.
I appreciate it.
So I've already talked about a lot of these. So even before we saw Omicron, we were noticing that people who were vaccinated were not going in the hospital, and that's what this graph shows, that the vaccines were keeping people out of the hospital, no matter which variant. Next slide, please. I want to mention how important the booster vaccinations are, and this is even more so for the Omicron variant. What this graph shows is specifically for Pfizer, but it's very similar for Moderna, is that over time, which is going left to right is time, after time since your second dose, your immunity wanes. And so it goes from, you know, above 80% to maybe 60% when it was Delta. With Omicron, we're seeing that immunity wane is more significant. So it's even more important to get your booster with the Omicron, and then that boosted back up to where it was right after you got your your second, your second dose. And a lot of people ask, well, what about having COVID? What about that natural infection? What we do see is that this, and this is, you know, we're learning more, Omicron is about five times more likely to cause a reinfection than Delta was. So we're seeing a lot of people, both in the hospital and out of the hospital, who had COVID a year ago, who were hospitalized for COVID a year ago, or or less, and they're getting infected again. And there's an estimate that the protection from a previous natural infection where you got COVID may be as low as only about 19%. So it certainly doesn't offer as robust protection as as the vaccination. And that's, so that's why we recommend, please do get vaccinated. And that's, so that's why we recommend, please do get vaccinated, even if you did have COVID. Because if you have both previous history and vaccination, then you're in a much better position. Next slide, please. And so this graph shows that with the Omicron, and if you do have your booster, you're 25 times more protected in terms of antibody levels than if, if you don't have your booster. And, and again, we, we didn't see that significant difference between having two shots versus three with the, quote, "original" virus. Next slide, please. So it was mentioned that, you know, Talbot County, we have pretty good vaccination rates. So I just separated out here, I know there's a lot of numbers, but in adults, we have about 80%, almost 80% of our adults have had their full vaccination primary series of, you know, two doses. And of, of those people who are eligible for boosters, we've got 63% who've gotten a booster. That means that we do have about 27% of people who are eligible for a booster who haven't gotten it, and, and that's about 7,800 people. And that's in addition to the adults who are unvaccinated, who are at higher risk of hospitalization. And so I've highlighted just the number of people in each category, in each age group, who are either not really, quote, "up-to-date" on COVID vaccination, or completely unvaccinated. And this, this, these are the numbers that kind of worry me in terms of potentially getting hospitalized. And this amounts to, in total, if you add up the 8,222 people who are not up-to-date, as in they need a booster, or they're not fully vaccinated with their primary series, with the unvaccinated people of almost 6,000, you're getting about 14,000 individuals, which comes to 38% of our county population. And so for, you know, we really want to recommend, again, people get their booster and complete their vaccine series, and consider getting vaccinated if they haven't done so before. Now it's even more important. Next slide, please. And so really, the message now is, how do you, how do you live with, with COVID? So as Councilman Pack mentioned, you know, COVID's going to be with us, we're not going to eliminate it. So how do you live with it? How do you survive it? How do you reduce the burden on our systems? And there, there's really four ways to do this. In my opinion, the most important is vaccination, including getting that booster. Wear a mask when you're indoors and public. That has, that has been the consistent message from the CDC, from, from us, please wear a mask. Some people, at this point, may want to upgrade their mask, and consider upgrading to a KN-95 if they have risk factors, or, or, you know, if they know a lot of people around them have gotten sick. We do have lots of KN-95s, we're trying to distribute those out to the community through various outlets, at our health department libraries, et cetera. But it's, it's important to wear a mask. I understand the fatigue with dealing with this pandemic, we're all tired of it, we all wish it would go away. But this is a critical moment, and I want people to sit up and remember the important things we've been talking about. These messages that I'm giving here are not different than what I've said every time I've come here. But it's, it's important now, especially for this timeframe we're dealing with Omicron. Get tested if exposed and when sick. Again, we mentioned a little bit about the testing situation. We do have some increased testing resources coming our way, whether it's going to be enough to meet the demand, you know, everywhere is, all their appointments are, are taken up with testing, and there's just, we're not meeting demand with testing. And, and that's not a, a resource issue necessarily for PCR tests, it's, in terms of tests, it's a staff issue. You know, we, we can't pay people enough to, to, you know, conduct testing. If you are sick, stay home. Call your, call your PCP, call your main doctor, because there are therapeutics now, there's treatments for COVID, some oral, a pill that can help keep you out of the hospital. And the state is slowly getting some of these, some will be available at pharmacies. So for instance, there's one called Paxlovid, that's 88% effective at preventing hospitalization and death from, from COVID. This is an oral pill, and, and that's going to be coming to pharmacies. So if, if you're sick, you know, if you're high-risk, call your doctor, and that can help keep you out of the hospital. We really want people to avoid ERs or calling 911s for, for things like, you know, getting tested or going, unless it's a true emergency. Next slide, please. So again, we have high demand for tests, not enough availability. I mentioned how many we're receiving on a bi-weekly basis from the state. And again, the site that will be adjacent to one of the Shore Health Sites is supposed to be coming to Easton in about seven to 10 days, is the word from a couple hours ago. And we will be trying to give out more when our tests arrive that we've ordered to the general public. But we, we generally, when we're not giving rapid antigen tests to agencies, we do distribute at the library. And I just wanted to also mention how, just today was announced, the Maryland Department of Health has a portal for reporting your at-home rapid test result. So, and that we will push out, it's on our Facebook page already. But one of the things I meant, I didn't mention about our numbers is, we only know what's reported to us. And with a lot of people getting at-home tests, we don't see those numbers unless, unless someone, you know, calls us, or they report through another system. So it is important for surveillance for people to report their results, especially if they're positive. Next slide, please. Again, I mentioned vaccination, including the booster. Right now, everyone aged five and up is eligible for vaccination. Everyone, as of last week, aged 12 and up is eligible to get a booster. You know, our teenagers were eligible for vaccination with Pfizer last May, so a lot of them are ready for a booster. And the guidance now is, after your second dose of Pfizer Moderna, five months after that, you're eligible for a booster. We're open at our Vaccine Center, five days a week, 10 to 6. Don't forget an appointment, come on down, we'll give it. And pharmacies as well, and doctors' offices. So vaccines are widely available, the avail, the supply is not the issue. And, and we do want to encourage everyone to consider, you know, getting vaccinated again. Next slide, please. With the masks, and I know people are sick of masks, I don't want to wear a mask, but indoors and public, it is recommended to wear a mask during these periods of high transmission. And so I, I do recommend that there be, I do recommend that the council, in its capacity as the Board of Health, give consideration to, to implementing a, a county-wide recommendation requiring face coverings in public for individuals five and older in, in public indoor settings. I think it, importantly, there should be a temporary, time-limited intervention, there should be appropriate exceptions, and I would recommend that such, such an intervention be implemented until the end of January, when this surge is, is really at its peak. And the goal of this is really to reduce the burden on hospitals, reduce the burden on law enforcement and public safety, allow our schools to remain in person, allow us to have enough teachers who are not out sick, so that kids can, you know, schools can remain open and not go virtual, and to, again, minimize employee absences and, and just general businesses. And this recommendation, a lot of counties are, have these in place, or are in the process of considering some. And this recommendation is consistent with a request that was made by the Maryland Hospital Association, the Maryland Medical Society, and some other healthcare provider agencies in a letter to Health Secretary Schrader. And so I, I do urge that this be considered by the, the Board of Health, and I would recommend it. Next slide, please, almost done. So when will the end of Omicron be? Well, we are peaking soon, but generally, we're expected to deal with this particular surge for the next 45 to 60 days. And will this be the end of the pandemic? Well, we will be, next slide, please. We will be dealing with COVID coronaviruses for a while, but what is going to help us get to the state of an endemic disease is getting our population the immunity they need to deal with it, so that society can function. Vaccines are doing what we hoped, which is keeping people alive and out of the hospital. But we are not at the place yet that the population has enough immunity to this disease so that it does remain a significant threat to public health and the public health infrastructure. So we will be dealing with it for a while, I hope it to get better soon. But, but the next couple of weeks are very critical, as I mentioned. So thank you very much for allowing me to present some information, and I'm happy to take additional questions, if you have any.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Dr. McGuire. Mr. Stanton, do you want, you want to say a couple words?
Dr. McGuire, you know, you've been on the front line for a long time. Matter of fact, I thought we were counting, we began this endeavor 668 days ago, or one year and nine months ago. And I think that, as divisive an issue this is in our community, our community has come together in the past 668 days, and we've wrestled with issues. We wrestled with issues when there were people that couldn't find food, and the community came together to help feed those individuals. We, we came together when, when our, our hospitality industry was, was being impacted severely, and, and under the leadership of Councilmember Pack, we, in council, we pushed grants through to our businesses. When our Hispanic community was being impacted, we rallied around that. So we, as a community, coming together, will work through this difficult time. You know, I, I certainly want to recognize, not only Dr. McGuire and her work, but our Emergency Operations Center, that, you know, there's, there's over two dozen organizations, and I'd say this because I want the community to be aware, there are over two dozen organizations and agencies in Talbot County that, that have coordination calls weekly presently to decide how to address issues, and to leverage the resources they have to affect, you know, affect change. And we're doing that right now. So the, the couple areas, I mean, there's no doubt, we're in a bubble. But the one area that I, I really want to highlight is, you know, our 911 system, our EMS is being severely impacted. And it's true, we, when you call an ambulance right now, it, it takes, on average, from anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour before we can get you off the stretcher into a bed. And at times, it's two hours, and we had one instance where it was over four hours. Our ERs are being hit hard. So you're going to see press releases go out asking people to only call 911 if you truly have an emergency. And if there's any way possible to educate yourself, to treat at home if you're, if you're chronic and not acute, then we want to encourage you to do that. We are wrestling with this right now, our healthcare system. Again, I, I just want to thank council for your leadership. The way this, the way we win this is not easy, but the way we win it is small communities all over working together, having tough conversations, and finding that middle ground. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Council President, for giving me a few minutes to speak on it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Stanton. And, and Dr. McGuire, I really, really appreciate all the information, and we're going to work on this for the next, you know, four weeks or so, and hopefully it's come down. But I want to make sure the public understands, okay? If you're sick, stay home, okay? That, that's what we need to do, if, if you're sick, don't, don't come out, so to speak, you know? You know, let's, I, I think we're moving in a, in a, in a, in a world, in the next six months, it's going to be common sense. And I think you have to use a little common sense when it comes to running to the hospital if you get the sniffles or, or something. You know, obviously, I, I had it, and, and my experience was, it was, it was a different sickness, so I knew I had something different. So listen to your body, what it's doing. Pay attention to it, it's a very serious situation, that's for sure. But if, if you're sick, that, that means you're sick and stay home. You know, that, that's, that's beyond the mask thing, just don't come out. So, you know, bear with some of the techniques that, that everybody's saying to do, it works for some people, some people it don't, some people got different views on it. But at the end of the day, you know, for me personally, I'm, I'm the president of this council, I take it very serious. I've got, you know, everybody knows me now, I'm, I'm not a big mask person. You know, but where I need to, to do respect for businesses, if I have to wear it, that's fine. You know, at the end of the day, I got the shot, I got the booster. I can tell you that, I'm not sure that I agreed with it, but, you know, the ultimate, the, the ultimate downfall is, if, if you, if you, it's going to help you if you get it again, okay? It, the statistics are showing, if you do get it again, and you have the shot, so far, it seems not to hurt you as bad. So I'm just telling you, as president of the council, you have to make those choices, okay? And we can sit up here and talk all night long about the do's and the don'ts, and statistics, and Dr. McGuire's doing the best she can, and we're doing the best we can as a council. At the end of the day, we want people healthy, we are, the five of us are the Board of Health, okay? We have to make some tough decisions sometimes, okay? That's why we're doing virtual right now, we're trying to help each other, help the community, okay? But just listen, be very smart, be very common sense smart. But my message to you is, if you're nervous about it, don't, 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 don't put yourself in a position in crowds, don't go in crowds. You know, there's, 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 there's ways to handle if you're nervous about it. You know, everybody has, has parents and, you know, concerns and stuff about that. So, you know, we're all going to get through it, we, we really are, we're going ups and downs, but, you know, be just common sense smart about it. That's, that's what I'm doing myself. I'm not trying to put myself in a position where, in big crowds or whatever. I have a job to the community. I'm in the community, I'm the president of the council, I'm around a lot of people, I owe it to try to do the best I can to protect myself and protect who I'm around, okay? But you have to make that choice yourself. So other than that, Dr. McGuire, I really appreciate it, and I hope, I hope some of this information helps whoever's listening, and, and really thinks about making their choice. It's, it's their choice, and I would recommend certain things. But if you're nervous about it, you know, just, just take your time, just take your time making the, the right decision, and that's, and that's up to you. So thank you.
Mr. Callahan, if I, if I may, I mean, it's
Absolutely, absolutely, Mr. Pack, absolutely.
I'm starting to hear, hear what you're saying, but, you know, and we, and we got to be very, very careful about the words that we're, that we're choosing, because people aren't listening.
Exactly.
And so, but, you know, it, it, this, I mean, if this is an endemic, which is something that has a, a, a consistent, constant presence in our life, it, it may not be getting through anything, it, it may be readjusting how we live with, with COVID moving forward. So, so it, it may not be getting through this, it's living with this, and what do we do to, to adjust to its presence in society, you know? So if this is going from a pandemic to something which is going to be constant and consistent in our life moving forward, you know, we have to readjust how we do things, how we communicate, and how we interact, so that we can keep everybody healthy. You know, I, I, I was certainly, you know, you said you didn't agree with getting a, a shot, I certainly agree with getting my shot, but I think the science, the science proved that being vaccinated was far better than being unvaccinated, the science proved that being boosted increased your immunity and gave you more protection than, than just having the two solo shots. So, you know, my, my, my message to constituents would be to follow the science, to follow what your health director and your other health officials have been saying from federal level to the state level, to the local level, and get your shots.
Thank you, Mr. Pack, I, I appreciate it. Okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Yep, yes, sir.
We, we, we do have, we do have a recommendation for an action item here, and I, I guess my, my question would be to, to council, if we are, if we are going to consider acting on that recommendation, what is the mechanism for doing that? We've been through this before, early on, in the early days of the pandemic, that, that mechanism was a, a state of emergency, a declaration of a temporary state of emergency. I think last time it was done in kind of a, a, a patchwork of, of county and municipal actions. Does it need to be done that way? And so if we're going to consider doing this, what would be the way of going about it?
Thank you, Mr. Lush. I heard Dr. McGuire on her recommendations. I think that's something for council to consider right now. But I don't want to put anything in place right at this second.
Well, if we're going to consider that, I think the first stage of that would be understanding what's the mechanism we would go about in doing that.
Is Patrick on?
I am, yes.
Well, Patrick, can you review the mechanism if council so chooses the recommendation?
Yes, I will review and report back.
Thank you, Mr. Lush. I appreciate it.
Frank DeVillio, one thing that I've been close, obviously, I've got children in the schools. I've been closely following the schools, which is somewhat a unique experience, a study group in and of itself, of what masking does with strong masking requirements and high vaccination numbers. You mentioned that the 5% positivity that we were initially using those numbers, they've gone out the window. Things have changed a lot with how the school board and schools are implementing things. And I was just wondering if there is some information there that you would be able to share to kind of calm the fears of the people that are saying, gosh, the numbers have really spiked, and schools haven't done anything. But I know that there are discussions and decisions that are keeping the children safe there. Is there anything that you could speak to that briefly?
It's a very important question, because, you know, last year, the situation was completely different. We went virtual for most of the school year. And this year, really, the goal has been completely different, because we saw the negative effects of virtual schooling and in many realms. And so really, the goal this year has been, let's try to keep schools operational, let's try to keep the kids in school. And that's why we were really pushing, especially for children, you know, who are eligible to get vaccinated, so they can stay in school and not have to be quarantined and fully participate. And so the metrics in schools are high right now, as they are with other areas. The schools are not the predominant cause of spread. And what's a little difficult at the moment right now is, since Omicron came into our lives, schools have been open generally one or one and a half days. So we haven't seen exactly what is being transmitted in schools. Or sorry, no, they've been, yeah, since it was last Thursday, and we had a lot of snow days. I called that Mother Nature's natural lockdown. But so, you know, the good news is, prior to Omicron, we weren't seeing significant levels of transmission of COVID in the schools when those layered prevention strategies were in place. I get asked all the time, what are the metrics you use to determine closing a school? And it's not simple. It's looking at what's going in the school. And basically, is the school able to be operational? Is there evidence of widespread school-wide transmission? Is it a dangerous place? You know, that's when we have those hard conversations. We've had those hard conversations already for a long time. And we speak daily with the schools. I met with all the schools this morning. And we're in constant conversation with them. And there are high cases, and we involve our epidemiologists. And so there are interventions that have been put in place in terms of distancing and hand washing and mask requirements, and isolation rules and quarantine rules, and, you know, and other methods, testing. We're now testing athletes. We're testing students before they can come back from quarantine. You know, so there's many layers that are helping schools run in a more normal way. Will it prevent every case of COVID? No. And that's not the goal. But the goal is to have schools functioning as much as possible, and have students not be absent as much as possible. So I hope that answers a little bit.
That does. And thank you very much. And thank you to your staff that are in the schools. They're really the front line. I know with my children test, one I had once at home who was quarantined because he was near a student, and the nurse was the one who answered most of the questions. And then when my son tested positive for COVID, and we had to notify the school, a different school, Chapel versus East and Middle, and student body sizes differently, they both knew the population. They knew the kids. They knew how to quickly get things under control. And I really want to thank them for doing an excellent job. I have to think that they're the ones who are helping lead the fight and making things safer and answering a lot of questions. So thank you.
Thank you. They really are. And one of the interventions I just want to briefly mention is, we purchased some rapid PCR tests specifically to be used in the schools so that kids can find out within an hour what their status is, so they don't have to miss as much school. They don't have to wait two days for an answer. And you're right, the nurses in every school, both independent and TCPS, they know their student body. When I call them, they have the answer right away. And they have been just really at the front lines and the core of this. And I hope everyone in the community really appreciates all their effort, because it's been really important.
Thanks a lot, once again, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on, council. The next thing we have on the agenda is presentation by the Talbot County Public Schools on the request from Maryland State Highway Administration regarding some improvements on Route 322 on the bypass on Glenwood Avenue. So I think we have,
I think we have.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Kevin, can you hear me?
Kevin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're all right.
Yeah, you're all right.
All right, very good. Thank you, President Callahan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good evening, members of the council. I have a much easier topic, I hope, than the COVID issue. And I give all of you and Dr. McGuire and her staff credit for all the work that's gone into managing this situation we're in. So I do have the very brief presentation about the State Highway Administration's request to the Board of Education regarding improvements that they would like to make at Glenwood Avenue and Maryland 322, the bypass. And so the improvements that are taking place, and I know Jessica is pausing here, or Susan, I'm not sure who's running the presentation there, once they get that situated.
Kevin, can you see the telephone?
I can. Is it look good to you? Because I can go ahead if it looks fine to you.
I can see it. It's only very little.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Hey, Kevin.
Before you start, is everybody hearing like an echo?
There's a very bad echo.
Very bad echo.
If everybody could mute.
Device.
Device.
Mute.
Everybody mute.
All right, is that better, now that everybody's muted? Okay, very good. Yeah, and the presentation is, so that looks great. Thank you. So this is the first slide of the presentation, and this is just a bird's eye view on the intersection there that we referenced. And that just kind of breaks down the improvements that State Highway is proposing to make there at the intersection. And that is not the focus of my presentation tonight. My presentation focuses on the bottom right corner there. And if I could advance the slide, it'll show a little closer view of that. So in that bottom right corner of that construction plan, there is a small area outlined in yellow there, which is the existing right-of-way on the border of the Board of Education property. And then within that, there's a green outline that is a temporary easement request that State Highway is making to the Board of Education. And then inside that rectangle or box there, there's an area marked "fee" with a black line. And that area is what I would like to kind of go through and discuss with the council tonight, just very briefly. Basically, the State Highway Association is looking to encroach on their existing right-of-way onto our property, onto the Board of Education property. And they would actually acquire that very small fee area there for stormwater management improvements that would be taking place associated with the overall project. If I can have the next slide, please. So here's just a couple pictures from the bypass. First, top left, just up to the school. And then the bottom right is the actual acquisition area, which is basically the swell area there along the bypass, right on the border of the Board of Education property. Next slide, please. And I know that's a little hard to see for some reason. But ultimately, the area that we're talking about is very small. We're talking about 1000 an acre that they would be asking the Board of Education to acquire in order to make these improvements. And they would, State Highway Administration would be, you know, paying for those damages, basically, to the property in order to make the improvements, and providing the Board of Education $2,950 for that small area that they would need in order to complete the project. So as I said, it was short and sweet. The Board of Education has considered this, and they have approved the State Highway acquiring that very small portion of the property at East Elementary in order to make the improvements, because we do support, Board of Education does support, the overall improvements that would take place at the intersection there. And just so the council is aware, the improvements that were noted on this presentation only include the State Highway Administration improvements. But there is actually a plan by the town that's an amendment to this plan, that I don't have the details for yet. But they are looking to do some additional crossing improvements there at the intersection, possibly a light. And I'm not exactly sure where that stands, but as soon as that information is available, I can certainly provide it. So I can answer any questions the council may have.
Hey, Kevin, this is Corey.
Hey, Kevin, this is Corey.
Sure.
Is the school board prohibited from selling any?
I'm sorry, that's an echo.
Echo. Is the school board prohibited from selling any land or property without county council approval?
Corey, yeah, I apologize for that echo. I'm not sure what's going on there. But so my understanding is, and just full disclosure, I brought this to staff, asking if the Board of Education needed to get council approval for this. And my understanding is that, no, this is not something that we have to get council approval for. This could be a Board of Education action. The only thing that I have to do is notify the IAC, the Interagency Commission for School Construction of the acquisition. There's no approval there either, because it's under one acre. So that's basically the summary of the approval process, as far as I know it.
Kevin, is the mayor or anybody from Talbot?
Sorry. So my understanding is that the town is supportive of this project, as they are, as I said, on board with making additional improvements at that intersection beyond what the State Highway is doing, which is primarily just a expansion and better marking of the lanes there at the intersection to make it safer.
So it'd be helpful if they,
It'd be helpful if they,
Last town meeting. I apologize.
I apologize.
For being unaware of this.
For being unaware of this.
Is there a safety study that's been done?
My understanding is yes. But that would not be my area of expertise, and that would be something that the town and State Highway would have to provide. I know there are concerns with the light at Port Street, and then having another light potentially. Like I said, that's not part of this presentation. That's not part of the State Highway plan. What our interest is, is Board of Education, is having a safer intersection there for our school community and for buses to get in and out of the East Elementary School campus there.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
We've seen pedestrians killed on this road recently. And I'm not sure that I'm prepared to vote on anything until I can see a safety study to say that pedestrian traffic across 322 makes sense.
Yeah, Frank, I don't think that, my understanding is that this is more of a traffic situation. When I said crossing, I didn't want to, I don't have knowledge as to whether we're talking about a pedestrian crossing. My understanding is that this is a traffic light situation that they're looking at, that the town is looking at. But once again, the town should weigh in and give their perspective to the council.
Okay, council, any other questions?
Sorry, I'm trying to keep that echo down. No, I don't think, I think I'm good. I just wanted to make council aware of the situation as it unfolds there.
Okay, Kevin, I appreciate you bringing us up to speed on everything.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, let's move on to the next thing on the agenda, and it's an update to Department of Public Works. And Ray, are you with us? Yep, there he is. Okay, buddy. So if you can bring us up to date on what's going on, and try to keep it as brief as you can.
Okay. Very briefly, the Community Center of the sewer, basically, they should be wrapping up the force main, we're hoping by the end of this week. At the same time, in talking with EastCom, they're scheduled to start the installation of the manholes in front of the building, which is the gravity system that would go to the pump station. That should be started next week. The goal right now is also to wrap up that project by the end of this month. So we haven't heard anything different from the contractor that they will not complete that, or they will miss that deadline of finishing it by the end of the month. In addition to that, we also, the other projects, just real briefly, they're in construction. The belt filter press for the St. Michael's wastewater treatment plant is currently being manufactured, and it should be delivered to the plant in May for installation. They will begin demo work probably in March. And in addition to that, we are also working to have the senior center parking lot put out the bid. So we're working on the bid advertisement for that project as well. And then we should probably start seeing work, start with the St. Michael sewers, which is $1.6 million. That work hopefully will begin probably sometime in February. So we'll begin those projects. In addition to that, we also have, I guess, designs that are underway. One of the things that we are working on is the Ferry Point wastewater treatment plant. That project, we're currently looking at the means of disposal, based upon discussions with, I guess, MDE through RAO. We're not allowed to direct discharge, so that's one of the reasons we're having to go through a process and review spray irrigation or groundwater injection. And we'll kind of keep the council posted once we determine how we can dispose of the effluent from that proposed wastewater treatment plant. We've also been working on the Preservatory Mills. We had a meeting with MDE's AGs last week. And we're also working to present, I guess, or prepare the applications to the Maryland Water Quality Finance or prepare the applications to the Maryland Water Quality Finance Program for the Preservate Y Mills, as well as, was it, we had a couple other projects, I'll read this for you real quick, and that was, we also have, oh geez, the Region Five wastewater treatment plant sewer extension, as well as sewer collection system improvements. And we also have a sewer extension to the Barneck Fairbank. We're applying for funding as well. And we're hoping to have all those applications wrapped up by the end of the month. In addition to that, we also are working on the Black Dog Alley. The survey work was completed for the design. And then ultimately, Airport Road, we're still working on the right-of-way requirements and acquisition plan. And then with that, we have the Goldsboro Net Road, trying to get our permits for environmental permits and also finalize the design on that. The other thing we also are working on is the sewer extension related to Resolution 235, and we currently have, Rent Lane Engineering has received comments back from MDE on the Royal Oak Pump Station, as well as the Forest Main's into, was it North Bend, Doncaster, and Rolls-Royce Range Road. We're hoping we can sit down with, I guess, MDE financing to work out the financing package. I'll just let the council know, we are probably, we are going to have to have a rate increase come with the next budget cycle, so we'll be presenting that to you hopefully soon. And we're also working to try and apply for permits for the Resolution 250 project, which is a sewer extension down to Bosman and Nevin. And we're hoping to have a lot of that done probably in March.
Ray, this is Corey. Hi, Tom. Appreciate all of those updates. It certainly wasn't necessary for you to go through all those items this evening, but I certainly appreciate it. The two items that I wanted your comment on was, number one, the sewer extension to the Community Center. You did submit a memo to us earlier this month, that kind of laid out why it wasn't completed, I think, earlier this year. If I remember correctly, we were looking forward to be completed by the end of calendar year.
Yes.
December. So do you feel comfortable now, with what you're telling council today on the 11th, that by the end of this month, that EastCom will have that connection completed, and that the Community Center will finally be connected to the wastewater treatment plant in the town of Easton?
That's what we're looking at. Barring any heavy snow events, I think, that would put us back, we are definitely on target to finish by the end of the month.
Okay, so all the conflicts that were with East Utility have been resolved?
Yes, sir.
All the material conflicts as far as shipping and production have been addressed, and it's now just getting hands on the plow and actually putting piping in the ground? Is that correct?
Right, that is correct, yes.
Okay, all right, that answers that question. The Ferry Point Marina, you know, we had a PR done, and the PR looked at a number of different scenarios regarding Ferry Point. One was to take connection over into Dorchester County. Another was to move it up north into Trap. Both of those didn't seem feasible from a number of different standpoint. And then I think council finally settled in on doing the MBR plant in addition, and source point discharge into the chop tank. I wasn't aware that that was not a permitted discharge until now, well, until a few weeks ago.
Right.
When the PR was done, was this something that the contractor was not aware of when he submitted that option to council, or what?
I think the, MDE had originally, early on, I guess, had concerns about a direct discharge. So I think the game plan was, is, you know, okay, we understand your concerns, but can we go deeper and, or, you know, further out into the chop tank? And ultimately, MDE's come back and said, no, you can't do that. So that's part of the reason we're running into, you know, now we're having to look at, you know, an alternative means of disposal, which is spray irrigation or groundwater injection. I'm sorry.
And God forbid me bring Lakeside into this discussion, but I will. How, if we're not allowed to discharge into the chop tank for the small MBR, how is it that the Lakeside project would be allowed to increase their discharge into that water body? And I know they have an option to spray, but I thought there was also an option to discharge as well.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're hearing from, I guess, MDE is that ultimately, because of the shellfish that are in the Chop Tank River, the shellfish beds, that's the reason we're not allowed to discharge there. And that's, MDE's taking a very hard line on that.
Well, I think that this changes things significantly as far as us trying to provide that commercial, most commercial users down at Ferry Point with a way to keep their businesses alive and thriving. And I hope that we're able to find a solution to this. I mean, in order to have a spray plant, you know, we have to acquire more property and then go through all of the storage, as you laid out in your memo. You know, it has to be stored, because it can't be sprayed during the winter months, and we have to be set back, you know, from homes in the area. So this was certainly not something that I remember us even remotely discussing earlier on, on the PR process. So it's definitely, in my opinion, a game changer, as to how we're going to get this resolved, so.
Now, we are looking at some options. You know, one option is, is to try and work out a deal with DNR and spray irrigate. I think that State Park is one option that we're looking at. At the same time, we have a property owner that does have land, so we're looking at trying to possibly acquire or do an easement on their land to spray irrigate.
Okay. Okay. When will you have something to present back on either one of those options?
I will, to be honest with you, it'll probably take a little bit of time. I would say we're probably looking at spring before we'll have a good answer for you. So I would say, I can probably give you an update probably maybe March, if not April.
It'll be March, April, okay. If you could, Ray, work to get us something back by the spring on this. I don't want to see this project die on the vine.
Okay.
So I want to see all options being explored, to see how we can help those commercial properties out down in that Ferry Point area. So if you could certainly please give us something for council to consider in March, April, I would appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions, council, or for Ray? Okay, Ray, well, appreciate the good update. And Ray, I know you've got a lot on your plate, and I can tell you, you're hard at it, you're in the trenches, and we, as a council, really appreciate all of the hard work you're putting into this, because, you know, the wastewater and all this stuff is so vital to Talbot County and have a healthy, you know, environment around here. And, you know, I'm just, I'm looking forward to someday when it does get to the Bosman-Nevin area.
Right, right.
It sounds like it's coming soon, so.
Well, and last but not least, I would say that the Region Two wastewater treatment plant discharged less than 2 milligrams per liter of total nitrogen to the Miles River for the entire calendar year of 2021. So the guys out there did a great job, so.
Well, let's. Mr. Kelly, just one quick question. Speaking of the Region Two plant, Mr. Clark's spoken to us in the past about ionized issues in that system, and I know that we've been using a lot of grant funding, USDA grant funding, to fix a lot of those issues in certain parts of that system. Could you remind us, Mr. Clark, of the enforcement mechanism that's now lacking for us to be able to stop the unauthorized penetrations into the system?
Yeah, we, well, just to your point, we do have the $1.6 million to help address a lot of the inflow that's coming in through, let's say, broken pipes and whatnot. One of the problems we do run into now is that we have, let's say, laterals or cleanouts, as well as downspouts that are tied into the sewer system. And so we would need to have legislation adopted for, like, illicit connections, so we can help prevent that from happening in the future, as well as creating a mechanism that we can go after the property owners. There is a difference, we can do that with the council by resolution for all the properties that are in the county. However, because we serve properties within the town of St. Michael's, any actions we do with an illicit connection type ordinance would have to be done through a bill.
Should the Public Works of Boshee Board bring that language back to us first?
We're working on that, yes, sir. And we'll try and, I'll try and get that, we'll meet with the board on, in about a week and a half, or next week, I'm sorry, and we'll try and get that.
Right, next week, yeah. I got your agenda in my hand now. So on the 20th, next on the 20th, we meet with them. So, yeah, please, please, this is, no, this is something else that's been sitting out there for a while, dealing with these illicit connections. We talked about this going back over a year. Again, this is another item, I don't want to see this die on the vine. We have to be able to have some type of punitive action against those persons who take upon themselves to connect into the wastewater treatment system, tying in their downspouts, tying in their sub pumps and what have you. So, yes, if you could please get something back to us, hopefully by spring in the year for council to consider for action, I would appreciate it.
Okay. The other thing, I just, I know the council may be aware of this as well, but we did have, I guess, leaks on our Forest Main, broken pipes on our Forest Main because of issues last year. One of the things, just, we are, and we did submit that to you all at the end of the year, we are submitting Project 2 MDE to put pressure sensors, as well as vacuum sensors, onto our lines, so that they'll help become an early warning system for us if we do ever break. So that's something we are seeking funding for as well.
Okay, then, all right. Thanks a lot, Ray, I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right, council, we're going to move on to introduction to legislation. Madam Secretary, are you with us? There she is. Okay, would you mind reading the bill into the record, please?
A bill to repeal and reenact Chapter 102 Parks and Recreation Talbot County Code and to enact a new chapter 76 entitled Golf Board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and comment on this, where we're at with this bill?
Sure, so this came about originally as trying to craft some regulations for parks in the county, and kind of evolved into a bit of a bigger project from there. But we had a work session back in the fall, we looked at a draft version of this bill, and this version that you have in front of you incorporates the changes that we discussed at that work session. It separates the golf board provisions from Chapter 102. And unchanged puts it in a separate section to avoid any confusion about whether these regulations would apply to them. And then it makes the other, some of the other changes that we had discussed at that meeting.
Do you have Mr. Pepper with us this evening as well, if he wanted to make comments?
Hey, welcome, buddy, how you doing? You're on mute. Yeah, can't hear you, Preston. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? You can, okay. Well.
Well, council president, this is my board, if you like, I can take it.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you, Mr. DeVillio, I appreciate that. Go ahead.
So, yeah, this is something that Mr. Pepper brought to our attention, that he would like us to codify the rules, basically. And it went through the Parks Board and is now before the council, and I'm willing to support this, to get it into discussion.
Thank you, Mr. DeVillio. Council, you know, anybody have any questions on what they've read? And so to bring, there's a few things we needed to take care of wording-wise, and it looks good to me, so anybody else have anything to say? Okay, so if nobody has anything, because we're at a virtual meeting tonight, I'm going to ask Madam Secretary if she would conduct a roll call on the bill introduction.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Could you go ahead now and announce the number of the bill and the public hearing, the date and time, please?
Yes, this will be known as Bill Number 1496, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, February 8th, at 6:30 PM.
How to get that? All right, then, well, okay, I appreciate that. Preston, sorry, you couldn't hear, say anything, but we appreciate, Preston, we really appreciate everything you're doing with Parks and Rec, and you work hard over there, and we appreciate all the people over there doing good work. Okay, let's move on. Okay, we got, next, we got the public hearing right now, so, so continuation of the public hearing. Madam Secretary, will you please read the Resolution Number 314 into the record, please?
Resolution Number 314, a resolution authorizing the transfer of any interest Talbot County, Maryland holds in a portion of Brooks Lane to the Commissioners of St. Michael's and the execution of a quitclaim deed to effectuate the same.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Once again, Mr. Thomas, do you want to comment on and make a few remarks on this resolution?
Sure, so briefly, this is part of land that was annexed into the town of St. Michael's back in, I think, 2017. One of the conditions of that annexation was that the town was willing to accept this portion of Brooks Lane as a town street, provided that certain widths and upgrades were made to it, to town standards, those upgrades have been made, and now we're ready to move forward as contemplated in the annexation. That's what this resolution accomplishes.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, I appreciate it. So at this time, because we're on virtual here, we got Mr. Parker available, so if you've got some comments, we'll open the lines up, we'll have three minutes to speak individually, and if you're representing an organization, I'll give you five minutes. Parker, do we have anybody, any callers or participants ready to speak on 314?
One indicating that they wish to speak on this item. If you do wish to speak on this item, please press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. No one is indicating.
Okay, all right. So at this time, I will, Madam Secretary, do close the public hearing on Resolution 314. Council, is now, is there a motion and a second to bring Resolution 314 to a vote? Okay, we have a second. We got a motion, a second to bring it to a vote. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll, please? Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Thank you, council, I appreciate that. All right, thank you, Parker. Parker, you still there?
Yes.
All right, all right, so let's move on to. All right. All right. So let's move on to County Manager Report. Mr. Stamp, you around? There he is.
I am. Thank you. Good evening. I have two items for your, for your consideration this evening, counsel. The first is under boards and committee appointments. I'm requesting your consideration for the reappointment of Mr. Paul Spies to the Planning Commission.
Make a motion?
I don't, motion is second. Got a motion, a second to appoint Paul Spies to the Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio? Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Next item I have is you're requesting your approval to award bid number 21-14 furnishing and delivery of 2,500 tons of AAS HTO, Ashto M43, number eight and number seven triple washed aggregate. As you read in your council packet, requesting council approval award bid 2114 to low bidder Vulcan Construction Materials Incorporated for the unit price of $31.75 per ton with a total bid of approximately $158,750. A total of three bids were received. So move.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for a bid from Vulcan for some stone. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please? Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price? Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Under announcements, county offices will be closed on Monday, January 17, 2022 in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And then my last comment is we're in that time of year where weather can get bad quick. So keep your eyes open and be safe out on the road. Thank you, counsel. That concludes the County Manager Report.
I appreciate the good work you're doing. Let's, let's move on, counsel. So let's move on to public comments. Parker, do we have anybody lined up for public comments?
We do have, no one indicating they wish to speak. If they wish to speak, please press the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen.
Have anybody right now? Just let me know. And we'll, we'll go ahead to council comments. And if somebody, if somebody, you know, calls in, just, just, just let me know. Okay, Parker?
I will do that.
Um, let's go to council comments. Mr. Lesher?
First, first, I want to encourage anybody who has not already done so to find and take the survey that the county's put out. You can find this on our webpage. If you go onto the county's main webpage, you'll see a pop up that will take you there. Or if it doesn't pop up or goes away before you hit it, you can, you can search for the ARPA survey. And what this is, this is, this is an opportunity for citizens to advise this council on how they would like to see these, I think it's $7.2 million allocated by Congress, that is coming to Talbot County, these one-time funds and how they can be allocated. And it's very flexible funding. And, and I think it deserves a citizen voice and citizen input, you know, to see how, how this should be done. We certainly have a number of ideas out there, and those are articulated in a way. And what we're asking citizens to do is, is give their sense of their priorities. It includes things like broadband and emergency services facilities and, and certainly aid, aid to, to local business. Some really important things, and we appreciate that citizen input in, in this process. And that survey closes on January 16. So there's just a few days left for you to get your voice in on this particular survey. In my opening prayer, I, I mentioned Archbishop Desmond Tutu. And reflecting on that, I had the privilege of meeting Desmond Tutu when I was a senior in high school. And the Archbishop was touring America, raising awareness of the plight of South Africans oppressed by the apartheid regime. That was 36 years ago this spring at Temple University in Philadelphia. Four of us, all seniors, drove down from our high school to hear him. I don't know that I can remember anyone else's words so vividly after such a lapse of time. He was encouraging us to support sanctions against the South African government and divestment of stocks in companies that did business with that government. He told us that, that some were certainly worried. He acknowledged that some were certainly worried that sanctions would hurt the very people that they were intended to help. That is, the black South Africans. And Archbishop Tutu said, yes, we understand that, speaking on behalf of those black South Africans. We understand that it will hurt us economically. And we want you to do it anyway. It was a powerful testimony. It was probably my first engagement within issue of justice. And I'm just one among the millions who he inspired. We lost Archbishop Desmond Tutu in December. The world is, is poorer for his loss.
Appreciate that. Mr. DiVillio?
Thank you. No comment at this time.
Hear me?
Yeah, did you come to me?
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay.
Your turn.
Yeah, it's, it's still some echo going on. Yeah, very, very, very appropriate words, Mr. Lesher. We all certainly mourn the passing of Archbishop Desmond Tutu and all that he did to bring awareness to the plight of South Africans during that time, of black South Africans during that time. So we certainly join with you in your remembrance of him. I just want to make a quick announcement regarding the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Basketball Classic. You all know that I am working along with Preston Pepper and Parks and Recs and Lane Ghul, the town of Easton, Parks and Recs, and the YMCA and Derrick White, Megan Cook, also with the towns of Denton and Federalburg and Cambridge. We bring together middle school students in the tri-county area for their members of Dr. King and all that he did and his efforts to bring equality and justice here in the United States during his lifetime. Last year, due to COVID, we were not able to bring the students into the DIMM. We just did not want to take that risk. Although this year we are have permission from the schools to enter the schools and go forward. In conversations that we had with Dr. McGuire, and we all heard her report earlier this evening, the members of the organizing committee, and some of them I just named to you all, have decided that we're not going to go forward with that annual event again this year. We're in our 15th season, actually, of the MLK Classic. I had to stop and go back and take a look at how long we've been doing this. It would have been our 15th anniversary of that. We had a commemorative patch that we had made. We had bags that we had ordered. We're going to hold on to those items. And hopefully by next year, we can bring those students together and, and give them their bags and those jerseys because they, we had to pre-order that because of all the delays that were taking place, of course, with vendors and suppliers. So those bags and things had to be pre-ordered. So those are upcoming. But we're going to hold off on bringing the students together. We are going to recognize four individuals, as we have done in the past, through the MLK Image Award. And we recognize four, four persons in the Easton, Cambridge, Federalburg, and North Carolina area for their commitment to equality and justice and for their commitment to continue living out the lifelong legacy of Dr. King, whether they be a teacher, a police officer, a pastor, or coach. We want to recognize them. So we will be coming before other this body sometime in March and February and announcing who the Easton MLK Image Award winner is and presenting him or her with their, and I shouldn't say winner, I should say recipient because there are, there are many, as you all know, through our Really Are Beautiful, there are many great volunteers here in the county. So we'll say this year's recipient will be announced. So I just want to make that announcement. I want to thank Mr. DiVillio, and he's been one of our sponsors in previous years for his, his contribution to us, as well as East Supility. I want to give them a big, big shout out. They've been a major sponsor of the MLK Basketball Tournament, YMCA for their partnership as well. So I can go on and on and on, but I won't. But it's going to make the announcement publicly that we're going to postpone that event for this year. But we will be passing out the image awards, and I'll come back with you later with that. I'll be right back, Mr. DiVillio. I mean, Mr. Callahan, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pat.
Person who's added?
I'm, I'm sorry, Parker.
We do have one person who's requested to speak.
Okay. Ms., Ms., hold tight, Ms. Price. Any comments there?
Sure. We legislative session in Annapolis begins tomorrow. So Mako met early, and we met today to do some pre-session stuff. And there's been about 200 bills filed each on the House and the Senate side. But it sounds like a lot, and it is. However, last year at this time, being in the middle of COVID, there was over 900 prefiled bills. So we did get started on our work with that. And also had the opportunity to quote unquote "visit" my first county along with the Executive Director, Michael Sanderson. And we visited Anarondo County. However, of course, it was virtually by Zoom. The reason that I mention that is we have a work session, as do many of the counties, on the police accountability boards. We were supposed to do that last week, but because of the snow, we didn't. We're going to do that in a few weeks. But it was a little bit of an interesting update that we were able to give to Anarondo County because we thought that there was going to be a whole bunch of state regulations coming out. And last week, the group that met didn't come out with any. So kind of what we see is what we get. And the way Mr. Sanderson put it is that the absence of state guidance results in more county flexibility. Now, you may or may not like what passed in Annapolis last year. However, kind of what we have is a skeleton outline. And so it, it, we like flexibility. We like county flexibility. You know, one of the challenges is going to be getting all this implemented by July 1. Time-wise, there might be some, some difficult things. We may not have people that meet certain, they want people on this board that have certain criteria. And in a small county like ours, we might not have somebody at the ready for that. But we will do the best that we can. And I think if we put forth our, our, our best effort. But that was a little bit of a surprise that there wasn't more meat put on the bone. But I'll take that as a positive that we can do with the flexibility. We can do, you know, we have to follow the skeleton, but we were able to do hopefully what, what works here for the county. There certainly are groups that, like the municipalities, it's interesting, the municipalities, one of their legislative initiatives is that they actually want enabling legislation so that they could have their own police accountability board. So I think when we had our little work session with the sheriff a few weeks ago, or actually it was with the delegation, you know, a town like Easton has more, more officers than the county does. But I don't really foresee them opening up the can of worms to have any amendments on it. But, you know, I just wanted to give you a little update that Annapolis is opening for session tomorrow. We got started with our work and, you know, Mako, we're a good resource for information in helping guide the counties as we each go through and put together both the police accountability board and the subordinate group, the administrative charging committee that we also have to put together. So stay tuned for that. Thank you.
Parker, do you still have somebody on the line?
We do. Caller with the number beginning 410-924. Please begin.
There's caller. Caller, can you hear us? If you can, can you, can you tell us your name and where you're from, please?
Hello?
Yeah. We can't hear you yet, caller. There you go. There you go, caller. I can hear you now. Can you start over? I can hear you.
Three tries is the charm, I guess.
Yes, it is.
Well, hello. Good evening. And this is Rebecca Ellison. The first thing I want to do is congratulate you on hiring Maria McGuire. She's exceptional. You know that I'm a concerned citizen. You may not all know that I'm, this is actually an area of expertise for me. I hold a PhD in molecular biology. I've taught microbiology in medical schools and in nursing schools. I'm going to leave that aside for the moment and say that I put all my faith in Dr. McGuire. And I heard you, heard her tonight give a fabulous presentation. I urge all of you to listen again and listen closely. And, and I don't think that this is a case where we can compromise. If she tells you that masking is important, I think you can't just wiggle around it. I noticed that you're all having this remotely. Aren't we tired of that? I think you can clearly understand what she said. We're going from a pandemic to an endemic, and you need to help her. I, the fire siren went off near me yesterday. I listened to the calls. It's frantic. They had Dorchester ambulances. Easton was on code red. They had a head-on collision on top of people having COVID episodes. Really, please believe the data. And so what I would like to say is this, you are the health department, apparently, in some capacity. She gave you her best recommendation on, based on her expertise and experience in this county. She backed it up with all the facts and figures. And what she said is vaccine supply is not the issue. We need to be more vaccinated. But what she really was telling you was that masking indoors in public is highly recommended. The CDC says this, the American Hospital Association says this, a bunch of medical people say that. As she pointed out, other counties go with that. I think Washington DC had a, had a masking requirement. Just because we're unfortunate enough to live under Governor Hogan doesn't mean that you can change the facts. I am a scientist. I know a lot about what I'm talking about. But let me just say this, you're missing the woods for the trees here. It doesn't matter what all of the statistics are. The fact of it is, just as you cannot become addicted to an addictive drug, if you don't put it in your body.
30 seconds.
If, if you don't put the virus in your body, you won't get sick. A mask is a crucial element in preventing illness. Why don't we just step with one big step into endemic and get away from pandemic? Please. She asked you, as an officer of the county, the head health officer, besides perhaps yourselves, to have an action item. Councilman Lesher picked up on that and said, let's have an action item. She said, perhaps only until the end of January. That's only two weeks away. I cannot go to the YMCA because they don't, they don't, they're afraid of upsetting people, so they don't allow masking. They don't, they don't promote it. They don't require it, is what I'm trying to say. I'll take that back. They say it's optional. You have no idea what my life is like. If you were approaching your 79th birthday, you wouldn't go outside either. I have not spent a penny in Easton for two years. I don't wander the streets and be lively at night or whatever you're hoping for. What you need to do is listen to Dr. McGuire. She's given you the key to get out of this thing, and you're refusing even to acknowledge her action item request. That's preposterous.
Thank, thank, thank.
You have a question, I'd be glad to answer it. But I hope that this is putting things in perspective of you. You all are lost in the wilderness. Just don't let the COVID virus into your body, and you'll be okay. A mask is how to do that. Please. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you calling. Parker, is there anybody else?
No one else is indicating. No one else is indicating.
Okay, all right, so, Madam Secretary, we're about at the end of our, do, do we go in closed session, or do we go to final statements for, do we do final statements, then closed session?
What, are you making any comments, Mr. Callahan?
Um, I'll make a few. Yeah, yeah, that's right, I forgot about that. So, so, so tonight, we had our first virtual, we're back to virtual for a few weeks. We heard a lot of, of information tonight. We had a good meeting. I really want to commend staff. You worked hard to get us, you know, kind of where we need to be tonight, and, you know, for the next couple of weeks and everything, and I think, you know, when, when Dr. McGuire was talking, I was listening very hard, and I, and I did, and I did hear her recommendations, okay? So, you know, we'll, 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 we'll walk, we'll walk through that and see where we go with it. You know my feelings. So it's a very serious situation that we're in right now, and I, and I'm not taking it lightly either. So, but anyway, I want to make sure that everybody had a great holiday. It was, it was a great holiday, and we have a great 2022 coming. We'll get past this, we'll get back to normal, and we got a lot, we got a lot of work to do this year as council, like Mr. Pack was, was, was asking Mr. Clark about what, what's going on with some of this wastewater and stuff. We got, we got some really good things coming, so we've got to stay positive on what's important for our county to survive and, and be prosperous, and we live in, in a really, really blessed place. So I really appreciate everybody being open-minded, and that's what we're going to have to be this year, open-minded, and we'll all get through this. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you steer me what, what I need to do next?
Mr. Leisher, if Mr. Leisher is doing the closing statement, he should incorporate the closed session in that statement.
Okay, that sounds good.
I, I, I will do so. So Council will be moving into closed session following this meeting. After adjournment of this meeting, the County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 25th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM, and will be a virtual meeting. The Council will be convening an open session at 3:30 PM for a work session with planning and zoning staff on their, on their recent strategic planning process, and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate legal and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to move into closed session, and adjournment to reconvene is noted?
DiVillio, second.
Okay, we got, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could I call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher? Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack? Mr. Pack?
Sorry, I, no, I didn't, I took myself off mute, all right.
Okay.